Thank you. At this time, as Mayor, I call the special emergency meeting of the Stanton City Council to order on March 18th, 2020. And if I could ask Ms. Simmons to call the role for confirmation of the council members present for today's special emergency meeting.
Mayor Dahl.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Here.
Ms., uh...
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Dr. Harrison.
Here.
The C...
Here.
Dr. Curran.
Here.
All in presence.
Thank you. I ask our city manager, Mr. Rosenberg, if he would now identify city and other officials present.
Madam Mayor, we have a large, somewhat large group here in council chambers. I'm myself am present. Assistant City Manager Leslie Beauregard is present. City Attorney Doug Gwynn, Clerk of Council Faith Simmons, Chief Finance Officer Phil Trer, City Registrar Molly Goldsmith, Police Chief Jim Williams, Fire Rescue Chief Scott Garber, Tourism Director Cheryl Wagner, Information Technology Director Kurt Plowman, Human Resources Director John Venn, City Treasurer Rick Johnson, and Representative, we have Robin Wallace, also with the City Attorney's Office, and a representative of the School Board, as well as another staff member or two. And participating by telephone, we have Dr. Laura Carnegie, Director of the Central Shenandoah Health District, and Lee Catlin, a Communications Consultant who is assisting the city.
All right, thank you. Before we begin the substance of our meeting today, please allow me to express and convey on behalf of our city, city council members and our city staff, our sincerest condolences to Dr. Curran and his family on the death of his father. We understand that Dr. Curran's father, who resided in Florida, died as a result of COVID-19. We cannot begin to imagine the sadness and grief that the Curran family is experiencing, but we want them to know that we are all thinking of them in this additionally challenging time. And next, no doubt there, these are very challenging times for so many, including our citizens, other individuals and families and businesses in our city and elsewhere across our country and beyond. We also extend to them our deep concern and care about them, and yet our hope that through individual and collective actions, our city, state, and country will persevere despite the hard times. As council members and the public are aware, yesterday by memorandum dated March 17th, 2020, I called a special emergency meeting of our city council. The call of the meeting today was based on the COVID-19 outbreak, taking into account the national, state, and local declarations of emergency, and the need and desire to preliminarily learn more and consider how the city and council might further address the emergency even beyond the good efforts of our city manager and staff. We thank them and thank the Division Superintendent of Schools and all division staff, teachers, and school staff for their efforts in these unprecedented times. Please let me mention that in calling this meeting, notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice by memorandum provided to members of city council. Also, let me mention and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting is being conducted by electronic telephone conference call, given that the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location, and the purpose of the meeting is to address the emergency. I ask the Clerk of Council to attach and incorporate as part of today's meeting minutes the March 17th, 2020 memorandum by which I called the special emergency meeting. I also note that we have a focused agenda. It is focused on the emergency. Other usual elements of our city council meetings are not included today, given this special emergency meeting. I ask that everyone do their best to keep that focus. Given that we are conducting this meeting by telephone conference call, with the meeting being livestreamed on the city's website and being heard by speakerphone, I believe that this means of meeting may be the first occasion in which our city council has met in this way. It merits a few special requests as we undertake this meeting in this unique format. First, I ask that each speaker speak loudly and slowly and self-identify each time so that it will be clear who is speaking. Second, please pause after each speaker so that there is a brief interval between that speaker and another speaker. Third, if for any reason a participant cannot clearly hear the speaker or must leave the meeting before it is adjourned, please let us know. Fourth, I ask everyone's patience, because without being in the same room, it is likely that a speaker will not realize that another speaker has not finished. We may unintentionally step on each other's words, so it's fine if we need to have the speaker repeat or clarify. We'll take whatever time is necessary so that everyone is clear about what is being said and by whom. And before I turn this over to Mr. Rosenberg, I just want to suggest that no one expects there to be answers to every question, because this is an unprecedented situation. And so we have to continually have conversations and, if you want to call it brainstorm or be proactive in looking ahead, but there's no way that we're going to be able to answer every question today, because we've not been in this situation before. And with that, I would turn this over now to Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Good afternoon to you and to everyone assembled in council chambers. I have emailed to you earlier today what I've referred to as an informal agenda for this meeting, which is largely based on the notice of meeting that was issued yesterday by the mayor. And so proceeding in the order of that agenda, I would first identify the topic of review of the nature of the emergency, which will be covered by Dr. Laura Carnegie, the Director of the Central Shenandoah Health District. She was with you for your regular meeting last Thursday to address the COVID-19 virus or disease, and she's joining us today by telephone. And before she addresses you, let me just note that some of the questions that I've seen that you have posed fall within the area of responsibility of the Virginia Department of Health, and we coordinate with VDH on a daily basis, and I speak with Dr. Carnegie on a daily basis. But to the extent that you have questions concerning preparation, specifically in the area of health preparedness, when she's finished with her remarks to you, you might take the opportunity to pose some of your questions directly to her. And with that, I would invite Dr. Carnegie to share an update with you concerning the status of the public health emergency. Dr. Carnegie?
Whoops. Thanks, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Let me just ask if the phone, if council members on the phone can hear Dr. Carnegie?
Yes.
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 Great, thank you. Let me just give you a quick update on the situation, and updates are available on our We have a dashboard that shows number of tests, the number of cases, and that's updated at approximately 12 noon each day. As of noon today, there were 1,278 positive and negative tests reported to the Health Department. This includes tests that were done via the state lab, DCLS, and tests that were done in the commercial sector. Of those total tests, 77 tests were positive. For our area, Central Shenandoah Health District, there's been only one confirmed positive case in Harrisburg City. If you look at the map on the dashboard, it shows where most of the activity is occurring in the state, and that includes areas of Northern Virginia and the eastern part of the state. Most of the southwest part of the state has not yet reported positive cases. Last night, Governor Northam and the Health Commissioner, Dr. Oliver, issued a public health emergency order that pertained to group gatherings in restaurants, theaters, and fitness centers. They ordered no more than 10 customers to be present in any of those venues. The local Health Department has regulatory authority over local restaurants that are permitted through Virginia Department of Health. We do not have regulatory authority over theaters or fitness centers. Today, my environmental health team throughout the district is reaching out to permitted restaurants to see what their plan is in terms of response to these orders. Plans could include a change in business structure to a pickup, you know, type structure. Some restaurants may already have the capability for drive-through pickup of food. It could include having reservations in blocks where you don't have more than 10 people in a restaurant at a time. It could include the decision to close for the time being. We'll try to work to the greatest extent that we can with the restaurants to help with their compliance to this order. Yesterday, my emergency manager and I met with all of the emergency managers throughout the district and had a review of the situation, response, gave them the opportunity to answer questions. The situation has changed rapidly since I last talked to you on Thursday, particularly in terms of mitigation response. On Friday, the governor made an announcement about school closings for two weeks. Prior to that, a lot of colleges and universities had already closed campuses and transitioned to online learning platforms. So the situation is changing and evolving rapidly. Part of our public health response is going to ramp up significantly in the near future, and one of our major roles is in case investigation and contact tracing. We've only had one positive case. We've been monitoring some travelers, but as testing capabilities increase and more positive cases are identified, our epidemiologic response is going to likewise be increased. Testing continues to be available in two different parallel tracks. One is the Public Health Lab, DCLS, in Richmond. The testing capabilities there are limited, so there are criteria for sending tests to the state lab, and those criteria are formed to try to help capture the most at-risk, you know, populations. So if people meet specific criteria, and those criteria have actually changed several times along with the evolution of this outbreak, they can call Public Health, we can expedite sample collection and transportation to the state lab and do testing via the state lab. Since last week, there's been commercial testing available, and that's available through two large commercial test labs. One is Quest and one is LabCorp. Any healthcare provider can access commercial testing and send COVID testing on their own. LabCorp and Quest both have an electronic link to our disease surveillance system, a electronic disease surveillance system called VED. So when a positive or negative result is released by those commercial labs, it automatically drops into the VED system, so we can see those results and we know how many people, you know, have had, reported out results, and obviously do public health surveillance on the positive results. As of now, we've been working with several entities to try to stand up testing centers. Over the weekend, we worked with Centerra Rockingham Memorial Hospital to set up a drive-through testing center on their campus. They had a soft opening yesterday and did some advertisements of the capabilities yesterday. I haven't touched base with them yet today to see how operations are going. Augusta Health likewise has stood up a drive-through testing center at their urgent care clinic in Waynesboro on Leesewitt Boulevard. We'd actually done a drive-through point of dispensing at that site a few years ago and have shared with them the plans and are trying to coordinate getting that testing site, you know, up and functional. One of the things that is somewhat hampering these efforts is just lack of availability to the large volume of test kits that they would need to obtain patient samples. So that's been one of the choke points really in doing testing. We continue to try to provide as much up-to-date education to both the public and healthcare providers on this evolving situation that we can. We started Monday a toll-free call-in system to serve the region, so to offload some of the phone calls that we were getting at the Health Department. We're going to try to direct general public concerns to this call line, and it's a toll-free number. It's 855-949-8378. The call center is currently located in our Harrisburg/Rockingham Health Department, currently staffed by public health nurses who have availability to several-page document of frequently asked questions that are updated on a daily basis by our central office. It's supervised by one of our senior public health supervisors or public health managers, so if there's a question that's more intricate and involved or needs to be escalated up the chain, they're available to help expedite that. By setting up this call center, it's allowed us to free up our local call lines so that we can direct attention to provider-based questions, help with questions related to clinical care and questions related to testing. One thing, I'm not sure how far this got advertised, but one resource that was made available to us was that the Community Foundation of the Central Blue Ridge has gotten a donation for COVID local response funds. That's going to be managed through the Augusta Health Foundation, and this would provide resources to charitable organizations in Stanton, Augusta, Waynesboro, Highlands, and Nelson Counties to help kind of offset some of the downstream effects of this outbreak and the need to socially distance and socially isolate. We continue to operate at the Health Department in an incident command-type structure that kind of continues to evolve and coordinate with all of our community partners. On the hospital side, there's a couple of entities that help us with managing access to hospital beds and access to care. That would include the Virginia Hospital and Healthcare Association, or VIHA. There's a Northwest Regional Healthcare Coalition, and our regional representative is Ron Kleindis. They help with assets related to hospital needs, bed management, surge management, ventilators, et cetera, you know, as needed. They and Virginia Department of Health have an online platform called the Virginia Hospital Alerting and Status System, or VIHOP. It was created in 2002 for the purpose really of managing mass casualty incidents, that it can be used to, you know, manage any large outbreak or large public health emergency. We report into the VIHOP system on a daily basis what are, what we've been doing for preparedness, what our needs are. Hospitals likewise report bed availability and needs. It basically serves as a platform where people who do emergency management, emergency planning throughout the state can see what the local conditions are, where assets may be opened up, and can appropriately manage emergency situations. Along with, you know, all these other partners, we certainly work very closely with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and our regional representative is Mike Guzzo, who's been involved in almost all of these conversations. I would encourage folks to continue to use the VDH and CDC website to obtain the latest accurate information. And that's probably about all I had to report. If people have questions, I'd be happy to answer those, or I'd be happy to remain on the line and answer questions later, whatever will work better for your purposes.
Thank you. This is Mayor Dahl. Because I cannot recognize people who might want to speak next, what I'm going to be doing throughout this meeting is going down through the list of council members and asking if you have any questions or comments. So we'll start with Vice Mayor Kyer. Do you have any questions for Dr. Carnegie?
For Dr. Carnegie? No, not right now.
All right, thanks. Ms. Oaks, do you have any questions for Dr. Carnegie?
Yes. It's my understanding that Augusta Health Center will be opening up some additional bids in the Expo Center in Fishersville and creating a MASH-like unit. Have you heard anything about this?
I have not. You know, Augusta Expo Center has been used, or at least talked about used, you know, for that purpose in the past. I've not heard about that. I talked with Dr. Baracco, who's the head of their infectious disease at Augusta Health this morning. She didn't, I didn't specifically ask that, she didn't mention it, but they do have some good plans in place in terms of using areas of the hospital that are currently not taking patients, such as outpatient, you know, total joint recovery wards and using those as dedicated isolation areas, but I'm not aware of any immediate plans to do anything off-site, but that could be in the making.
Thank you.
Dr. Curran, do you have any questions?
Yes, on the topic of beds at Augusta Health, are there any plans around the state, let's say that if a hospital system in some other region, such as Northern Virginia, or Hampton Roads, or Richmond, is overwhelmed, are there any plans to send patients to the Shenandoah Valley or other regions that may still have available beds?
Yeah, that's a great question, and that gets done really routinely during, you know, high-volume flu seasons. One of the ways that that can be done is, you know, informally, but one of the big platforms for seeing what the bed availability is, is that VIHOP system. You can, you know, you can access that platform, see what bed availability is throughout the state, and, you know, plan your patients accordingly.
So then I guess the implication of my question is that if we have extra beds and they get used up by patients from other regions, then Augusta Health may have to go to this Fishersville or some other plant for off-site beds earlier?
That's a possibility. Like I said, it's hard to anticipate what the needs are going to be, you know, right at this point, but I think every hospital has, you know, kind of emergency plans that would include things like the Augusta Expo Center.
All right, thanks. Mr. Holmes, do you have any questions?
Yes. And what was the call center number again?
Sure. It's 855-949-8378, and that's a toll-free number.
Okay. And then I had a couple other questions. You know, I'd heard under, they were trying to discourage elective surgeries so that these spaces could also be used for evaluating or people that are sick or to, you know, help alleviate some of the spaces to be used up at the main hospital, because a lot of these places have operating rooms and stuff like that.
That's correct.
Is that true?
Augusta Health, I think all of the hospitals actually within our region have kind of activated their, you know, emergency operations plans, have canceled a lot of, you know, elective surgery, you know, elective procedures, so that they can free up both beds and personnel in anticipation of having, you know, a greater volume of patients related to the COVID outbreak.
And, you know, if it intensifies, have you had the ability to call up, you know, LPNs or nurses or other medical professionals who maybe aren't working in, you know, in the hospitals?
Yeah, we do. I can't speak to, you know, the hospitals. I can tell you, you know, some of the things we've been doing at the local Health Department level. You know, we've been trying to hire contractors in anticipation of needs, particularly for emergency planning and epidemiology. Virginia Department of Health maintains a Medical Reserve Corps, or MRC, you know, throughout the state. We have volunteers, some are medical professionals, some are just people interested in helping out in an emergency, and we have coordinators for that staff of volunteers, so we can make use of them. Sometimes they have specific skill sets where we can put them to work with relatively, you know, complicated public health tasks. Sometimes they're just kind enough to do things that, you know, need to be done but don't require, you know, a whole lot of training to do, but that's, you know, a volunteer base that we can easily tap into.
Do you have the ability to tap into like, like, ex-military people who maybe have worked in the medical field or had some training that maybe live in the area, or is that any kind of a possibility?
Probably do. Um, prob- probably do. You know, from, from our, our perspective, like I said, I can mostly speak for the, the local health department, but we've reached out to a lot of folks who are retired who, you know, have all of the skill sets that we need to respond and have brought them kind of, kind of back out of retirement, you know, in order to, in order to help with, help with this. So, you know, I imagine the, the hospitals would have the same ability. When I talked with Dr. Baracco this morning, she'd already been contacted by a retired physician who, you know, was interested in, you know, just helping in whatever capacity he could. So, you know, I think people are good, they're willing to help out their communities and their neighbors and we'll, we'll, we'll put them to work appropriately to help.
I hate monopolizing.
Ms. Holmes, did you have anything else?
Uh, yes ma'am, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, uh, you know, yesterday I went around town because I was trying to find things like hand sanitizer and stuff like that and there, there was nothing. And I don't know if there's any list of other chemicals that you could use to kill the virus or, you know, or in trying to sterilize the places, but I mean, it was next to impossible to find anything. You couldn't find alcohol, peroxide, uh, things like that. I just didn't know if you had any ideals, if there's any other things that you could use that maybe we could put a list out for people to, if they can't get any of these other items.
Um, we have a, a list of disinfectants on our VDH website and I can, I can send maybe Mr. Rosenberg on that list. I, I think it includes, but if it doesn't, a sanitizer for, you know, most surfaces would be a bleach solution. And most people, you know, would have bleach, you know, on hand, so those would be something that you could use for high-touch surfaces. You need to be cautious about the surfaces that you use that on because bleach isn't, isn't a friend to wood and other, others.
I'm sorry ma'am. Go ahead.
Yeah, you just need to be cautious of what you use the bleach solution on. It's, um, you know, it's, it would be recommended, would not be recommended for wood or, you know, electronics, that, you know, that kind of thing. But I can, I can send Mr. Rosenberg the list of disinfectants.
Well, does vinegar work?
Um, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then one last thing, uh, what about the homeless and, and people that are sheltering in the, like, at Valley Mission and stuff like that? What, what, are there any things that are out there for those people?
We're trying to work with a lot of the assets throughout our district, you know, folks, you know, the homeless shelters, Valley Mission, our community place up in Harrisonburg and localities to come up with a plan for homeless. It's, uh, it is difficult planning because if there, you know, if there were, you know, a case in a homeless shelter, we'd have to envision isolating the case and then quarantining close contacts. We've talked with homeless shelters about ways that they can mitigate current risk, including, you know, increasing spacing distances between clients, you know, having availability to soap and water, disinfecting high-touch surfaces, or emergency plans in terms of the homeless, in terms of how we would manage isolation and quarantine, you know, have, have not been totally sorted out, but that, that, that population is not lost on us and we're trying our best to work with all of our community partners to come up with a, with a good solution.
All right, thank you. Dr. Harrington, you have any?
Yes, yes I do. Hi, Dr. Carnegie, I'm so glad you're with us today. I had, I had a question about farmers markets, open-air farmers markets. I've had a number of comments about that and questions about it and conflicting opinions expressed about the relative safety of open-air farmers markets. And so I wonder if you would give us your view on that.
Okay. I guess we, we hadn't really discussed farmers markets as yet on a high level because, you know, it's, it's not, not quite the season for those opening. I would say in general, you know, outside activities, you know, things outside, you know, are at less risk for, you know, transmitting disease between persons. So, you know, having an outside, you know, venue is preferable, that you probably the same social distancing rules would apply to, you know, a farmers market as to, you know, an indoor market that you'd, you know, hope that people, you know, would distance themselves as much as possible. And by distance, we think about, you know, six feet or so, you know, would frequently, you know, wash hands, disinfect surfaces, that kind of thing. But I, I don't think we've really come up with a, a plan for farmers markets as yet, but, but some of those, some of those general guidelines would apply.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, I had one other question please. I'm so, I'm so grateful to our school system and also Waynesboro and Augusta school systems for the measures they're taking to get foods, food to kids during this period.
Yes.
And I'm, and I'm just asking you for any kind of statement of reassurance that the personnel that are doing that work have been briefed and trained and, and know how to convey that food to the customers in ways that are safe.
Yeah, we've talked with the school systems about, you know, methods for doing that that, you know, limits, you know, that social interaction as, as much as possible, be that, you know, sort of a, you know, a pickup, you know, at a, a general place where, you know, traffic is being controlled, you know, just, just making sure that you're not getting, you know, everyone into, you know, one small area to get the food. I think the, the school systems, you know, had thought about that, you know, well before the, the schools closed and had worked out plans to use, you know, bus drivers and other staff that weren't currently having roles within a closed school to try to get, you know, food distribution accomplished. Likewise, we've been in communication with our Valley Program for Aging Services and their executive director, and they've developed really, really great robust plans for continuing to provide food access to their Meals on Wheels and Hungry at Meal folks, you know, that puts, you know, it doesn't put the, the receiver of the food nor the person delivering it at any additional risk. So I think, I think people have done a, a really good job with thinking of ways to just kind of drop the food and go and, you know, limit, limit that, that, that social interaction and really, really do, you know, social distancing even, even while delivering, delivering the food. One group that we're trying to reach out to is the Blue Ridge Food Bank. In talking with some of the food banks, one of their, they have a, a couple of limitations. You know, they certainly have concern for exposure of their employees to the general public. They also have oftentimes an older volunteer group who are in, you know, kind of the high-risk group that we'd, you know, want to be quarantining at home versus volunteering in a food bank. So, you know, how we kind of overcome, you know, some of those things, some things that we thought about and we're going to try to, you know, coordinate with some of the food banks is using some of our younger folks who currently aren't in school maybe to, you know, help pack boxes, that kind of thing. And whether food banks could just do kind of a drive-through pickup and delivery type method, you know, just have everything ready to go in a box and, you know, kind of put it in people's trunk and they can, they can kind of drive on. So, you know, again, kind of working with community partners to come up with some creative solutions that can meet the needs of the community while they're, you know, employing all these social distancing strategies.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Dole. That's my last question for them.
All right, thanks. Ms. May, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes I do. Dr. Carnegie, you mentioned that one of the things holding up the drive-through testing sites at Centerra, Rockingham and Augusta Health is the lack of availability of test kits. Do you have any knowledge of when, when we will be receiving or when the availability of test kits will no longer be an issue?
Um, I do not. We're can, you know, the private labs are continuing to work on getting out supplies. Almost all the hospitals have relatively large orders in place and awaiting those supplies. Likewise, the state lab in Richmond has some orders that are, you know, kind of slowly getting fulfilled through their supply chain, which is the Centers for Disease Control. I think that things have considerably improved in terms of testing capability over the, over the last week and that's certainly reflected in the, you know, the, the large increase in tests that are on our VDH dashboard. So I anticipate that that will get better. You know, there is, you know, availability to test, probably not, just not as robust as we would, would like at this point. Nonetheless, you know, Centerra, you know, has, you know, has been doing testing and that, that drive-through and I believe that Augusta was going to get that, that started, started up today. At least that was the indication by talks with them last night.
Okay. And then of the 1,278 people who've been tested in Virginia, how many of them are in your, your health department area or this area?
Um, I really, we, we haven't broken down the, the, the test to regions. What I can tell you is that the number of positives that are in our area, and that was just one in, you know, Harrisonburg City. So there were 1,278 total tests done and then it's broken down into counties by positive tests and that was a total of 77 around the state and just one in our district.
Okay. And once you're notified, if, if you are notified of a positive test in this area, do you have the ability to require that a business shut down and disinfect its premises?
Um, well, we're always, we're always notified of a positive test because we have a, a list of, you know, mandated reportable tests to the health department and that COVID-19 has been, it's either been added to that list specifically or it falls under an outbreak novel pathogen category. So we'd always get notice of the positive test. Once we get the positive test, we talk with the index case and do case contact tracing. The index case would be advised to isolate at home and the contacts would be advised to quarantine at home for 14 days after last exposure. In terms of workplace beyond, you know, just general disinfection, just general hygiene, you know, wiping down, you know, work surfaces, that kind of thing, we, we really wouldn't require that a business close to do like a, a deep sanitation and we, we wouldn't have authority to, to, you know, to close a, a business. You know, like I said, we could make recommendations for, you know, environmental mitigation and that would just be, you know, again, the high-touch surfaces, particularly like a workstation where, you know, where the, the case was working. But, you know, if they were in a, a small cubicle and, you know, a huge, you know, office situation, our recommendation wouldn't generally be for a, you know, a deep clean of the, you know, the entire environment.
E- e- even if there were, say, multiple people? You're talking about multiple people being potentially infected?
I'm, I'm talking about a single, single case and, you know, certainly it would depend on the, the work environment. Um, you know, we would be, you know, work environments that would be, you know, more concerning obviously would be healthcare settings, long-term care settings, you know, places where there's going to be, you know, high, high-risk patients. At this point, like I said, having had, you know, just, just one case, our, you know, our, our recommendations to workplaces have been fairly limited and like I said, I think it would depend on where the person worked, you know, how extensive, you know, our, our environmental cleaning recommendations would be.
Okay, thank you.
And the other thing to, you know, kind of keep in mind too is that, you know, we quarantine people who are close contacts, certainly, you know, people who are household contacts and intimate partners, you know, you know, meet that criteria. People who, you know, casually walk by, you know, a cubicle in the same workspace and, you know, haven't had close contact with the person probably don't meet, you know, contact. So we're thinking for close contact, the, the basic definition would be someone within about six feet of the contact person or about 15 minutes or more. That, that's what we consider a close contact. So just somebody, you just kind of casual walking by would be at extraordinarily limited risk, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't count them as a, as a, as a contact. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Dr. Carnegie, I just had one question. This is Carolyn Dole.
Sure.
The temperature that's significant in terms of the symptoms and when you should consult with your physician, the temperature is 100.6, is that correct?
Um, we generally consider a fever to be a temperature of 100.4 or higher.
100.4.
Yeah.
I've, I've also heard that for the, the high risks, the senior, senior high risk of the 65 and over, I had seen something that the temperature may only need to be 99.6 because seniors don't tend to spike high temperatures like, like kids do. Have you, is that accurate?
Well, I think, you know, we, we, we set that general fever parameter, but it's, you know, it's often not hard and fast and what we have to do is kind of combine it with some of the other symptoms that the person's having. So maybe it's a senior who has a temperature of 100, but also has a severe pneumonia, productive cough, you know, evident abnormal chest X-ray and, you know, was, you know, recently in contact with a traveler who came, you know, came back from, you know, a high-risk area. So sort of putting all the pieces together, so I, I can't say that, you know, we would, we would just use that, that one, you know, guidance to, to figure out who to test or what to do, but just sort of putting it in context. And you're right, people who, you know, sometimes, you know, older adults, you know, may not have the, the same response to infection, including, you know, may not have that, that high a fever, but it's, it's one thing to look at in the, in the spectrum of all the other symptoms that, that would make you more suspicious for COVID.
All right. Well, thank you so much. You're, you've probably been busier than you have been in your career in the last couple weeks and we appreciate you taking the time to talk to us about the COVID-19 and update us with information.
Oh, you're more than welcome. Oh, you're more than welcome, and I can stay on the line if you'd like if people have questions at the end.
All right, well, it's entirely up to you. We'll move along to the next agenda item, which is actions taken and to be taken. Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I start, let me just say that I think it would be helpful for Dr. Carnegie to stay with us at least through this next portion of the meeting, because I think some of you may have some questions that arise from my recap that she, and she may be able to contribute to the answers to those questions. So with that, I'd ask you, Dr. Carnegie, to stay with us just a little bit longer.
Sure, will do. Thanks.
Thank you. So, Madam Mayor, members of council, what I'd like to do now is sort of give you a summary of where we've been over the last several days and what we see coming in the days ahead. We first issued an advisory on behalf of the city to the public about the COVID virus on March 6th, and as I've mentioned already, council heard from Dr. Carnegie previously at your meeting on Thursday, March 12th. That evening after the meeting, we issued a public communication addressing our focus on continuity of operations and public gatherings. The next day, we had our first internal response team meeting, and then we continued work over the weekend, and this past Monday on March 16th, we took our first steps that affected city operations. And I want to stress to council that all of these measures that we've implemented have been undertaken after and on the basis of regular consultation with Dr. Carnegie. So among the measures that we've taken to date, through April 15th, we have limited events or activities on city property to those with less than 50 participants. And to date, this has resulted in the cancellation of six events, two 5K races that were scheduled in Gypsy Hill Park at the end of this month, the Breaking Bread event scheduled at Booker T. Washington Community Center, the dedication ceremony scheduled at Montgomery Hall Park, and the first two sessions of the Stanton Farmers Market scheduled the first two Saturdays of April after consultation with Tom Womack, the market manager. And I would note that the decision to cancel those sessions of the farmer's market was made at the time on the basis of the guidance from the Centers for Disease Control to prohibit public gatherings with 50 or more participants. And of course, that threshold has since been reduced by mandate of the governor to 10 participants. To date, the only exception that we've made is for an American Red Cross blood drive, which is scheduled in the days ahead for Gypsy Hill Gymnasium, and that was permitted only after consultation with Dr. Carnegie and what I understand to be a discussion that she had with the local representative of the American Red Cross to make sure that particular protocols were put in place and observed during the conduct of the blood drive. We also have encouraged the public to conduct city business by telephone or email, and similarly, we have encouraged city employees to do the same and to avoid in-person meetings and in-person business. We've limited travel for city business to the immediate region, meaning the counties that immediately surround Augusta County and the cities located in those counties. We've established a new leave category, public health emergency leave, to be used by employees who are unable to work, whether due to their own sickness, the need to care for a sick child or family member, for childcare purposes, or their need to self-quarantine due to exposure to the virus. And for now, that new leave category is available through April 15th. The bottom line is we don't want employees and their families to be penalized because they're doing the right thing by staying home to take care of themselves or their families and to protect others in the workplace from possible infection. Also on Monday, we declared a local emergency, which makes the city eligible for federal and state relief funding. On Monday, we conducted our regular management team meeting, which included additional participants beyond the core group that normally attends, including representatives from the schools with whom we have been coordinating our efforts for planning and communication. At the management team meeting, we communicated to department heads, and I have shared with you the need to defer any unnecessary expenditures throughout the remainder of the current fiscal year and to leave vacated positions unfilled. Yesterday, we implemented a second wave of measures concerning city operations. We further limited events and activities on city property to those with fewer than 10 participants, at the time on the basis of guidance from the governor's office, which transitioned from guidance to a mandate by the end of the day. We canceled the next meetings of the Planning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission, which were scheduled for dates later this month. We closed public bathrooms in Montgomery Hall Park and Gypsy Hill Park. We worked with Stanton Downtown Development Association to expand loading zones downtown to accommodate an increase in takeout business from local restaurants. We closed the visitor center, and we began implementation of the telecommuting program, again, on the basis of consultations with Dr. Carnegie, that the time had arrived for us to make arrangements for our employees to the extent possible to work remotely. Today, we are completing implementation of our telecommuting program so that by tomorrow, we hope that those employees who are suited, whose positions are suited to remote work are in fact working remotely with the tools that they need to do so effectively. Our next steps include a more significant focus on the fiscal and economic impacts of the crisis. And for that subject, I'd like to ask Phil Traer to share some comments with you. And, Mr. Traer, I'm going to suggest you come up here so that you're closer to the speakerphone, and we can be certain that council members are able to hear clearly.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm actually going to start off with a little bit of positive news. On a year-to-date basis, our sales tax is up $219,000 over the same time last year through December. Our meals tax is up $240,000 over the same time last year through January, and our lodging tax is up $148,000 over the same time last year through January. Our personal property revenue is $200,000 above budget and rising, and our real estate tax is expected to be at or slightly above budgetary levels. These are very important numbers because these are numbers that we had booked, so to speak, for the first eight months of the fiscal year. We are anticipating a significant downturn over the remaining four months, and the positive variances that we have right now will serve as a bit of a buffer to offset that. As Mr. Rosenberg mentioned, on the expense side, we have frozen open positions, and we have asked department heads to curtail all unnecessary expenditures, which will include part-time labor as well as overtime. In short, we believe that we're in a position to limp through FY '20. Further actions may be required, and those will take place in the coming weeks. We have a lag time between when we receive the actual revenues of 30 to 60 days. So we really won't know the full impact of our local revenue for at least 60 more days. But we do believe that we'll be able to get through FY '20. FY '21, however, is in flux. The schools have passed the budget. We have assembled the budget on the city side that's almost complete, which we were ready to present next Thursday. All this was based on revenue streams through February of 2000. Obviously, if this virus continues to wreak economic havoc, we're going to have to rethink FY '21's budget. Right now, we are trying to conserve all the resources possible to set up FY '21. But again, this may change. FY '21's assumptions may change. On the reserve side, the city has 15.5% of its general fund budget. That's $9 million. While $9 million is a lot of money, it's still only 15.5 of our general fund budget. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, so we'll start with Ms. Oaks. Do you have any questions at this time?
Yes, Phil, can you go in greater detail concerning the 15.5% general fund, the $9 million? Can you just talk about that a little bit more in depth?
Well, it is certainly there for emergency disruptions. I think that we have to be very careful how we use that, and we use that sparingly. That is a last resort. We will adjust operations significantly before it would be recommended to dip into those reserves.
Okay, so it's my understanding the state was looking at a 6% increase, but of course, that's not going to happen now. Can you just go over ways that we can readjust the budget beyond what you had mentioned as far as not hiring new people and curtailing some part-time work?
Certainly, any additional positions, it would be recommended to freeze into FY ' '21. If there's additional positions in '21, I would certainly recommend those remain open in FY '25 and '21, and that we do not hire for those. I would recommend the schools to do the same thing. As far as restructuring, without convening all of the department heads to go through department by department, I'm really not in a position to determine how we might alter our operations. But certainly, we will be considering that if this crisis continues.
Right, so we're going to be able to handle our fixed costs, such as debt service. That's not going to be an issue at this point?
Debt service, we should be fine with. We do have a debt service sinking fund, and although we were scheduled to draw down on that portion, we should be fine with our debt obligations.
Okay, so what do we have available right now to tackle, you know, just your basic human needs, what we need to focus on immediately, which is going to be like food and shelter for many of our citizens?
I'm not sure that we have been able to define a number, so without knowing a scope, I am reluctant to comment on that.
Madam Mayor, this is Mr. Rosenberg. I would just remind council members, as Dr. Carnegie has mentioned, that the Community Foundation of the Central Blue Ridge has established a relief fund specifically to address some of the needs of individual members of the community. And I'm hopeful that that is a successful undertaking and that the foundation is able to work together with us in order to ensure that the needs and members of the community are met.
That's true. However, $100,000 is my understanding, and Capsols looking at adding an additional $10,000. United Way, it was looking into contributing how much, I'm not sure, though.
Okay, so Dr. Curran, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
All right. Mr. Holmes, do you have any questions?
I was curious if there was any way that with maybe the meals tax and possibly lodging tax that we could give some of these businesses a break, not giving them, letting them off and paying the tax, but maybe paying a, maybe like excusing this month and have them pay on that further down the line at no interest. So say if they had a $4,000 food tax payment coming up on the 20th, we could not make them pay it on the 20th, but have it amortized over, say, the next two years or something at no interest. I don't know if that would be anything that's conceivable.
I wonder if Mr. Gwen could address that particular question?
Mr. Holmes, this is Doug Glenn. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I believe there's the feasibility legally of the city prospectively putting on hold, if you will, or suspending the imposition of meals tax, or, and you mentioned transient occupancy tax. But I would have a significant legal pause over a concept where we at least implicitly would be authorizing any local business to use what really are city funds, whether meals tax or transient occupancy tax, essentially as their working capital and in effect as a loan.
If I could also add, I'm not sure, some of these questions at this point may be addressed two items down on our agenda, on actions that may be considered by council. Is that correct, Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, it has been my intention to include that particular issue in a broader discussion of tools that may be available or suggestions that have been made for actions to be taken by council, yes.
Okay, so just keep that in mind. I think we'll be hearing some more information and having discussions, two more items down.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, I also want to hasten to add that I asked Mr. Traer to delve into the fiscal issues at the tail end of my presentation, so, or as a part of my presentation. So I want to remind council members that if they have any questions about the actions that I have summarized that we have already taken, I'm happy to answer those now as well.
All right, thanks. So, Dr. Harrington?
I don't have any questions for Mr. Traer or Mr. Rosenberg at this time. Thank you both for your reports.
Ms. Mead?
I have no questions.
All right, thanks. So at this point, we could move on to the review of prior communications and future communications. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to, as I've done with the measures that we have implemented, review for you the communications measures that we have taken. We've issued several media releases in the days since the crisis began, on March 6th and 12th, two on March 16th, and one yesterday, and as you'll hear subsequently, plans for daily updates if necessary from this point forward. We also undertook communications directly to employees on March 6th, 12th, and 16th, addressing issues of particular- addressing issues of particular concern to our employees, and emails to the management team on March 13th and 17th concerning the implementation of some of the measures that I've already described to you. I want to take a moment to acknowledge that we were slow to have a social media presence, including both Facebook and Twitter, due to staff illness and technological issues. But as of yesterday afternoon, those issues have been resolved, and we are now active on both of those social media platforms. Everything that we've done so far has been with the assistance of Lee Catlin, who's on the line with us, who is a former Assistant County Executive with Albemarle County, who handled communications and much more for the county before she retired several years ago. And some of you may have had an opportunity to see her resume, which I emailed to you earlier this morning. I also sent to you a possible media release to be issued on behalf of council that was prepared by Ms. Catlin. And she, as I said, joins us on the call, and I'd like to invite her to share her thoughts with you about our communication program going forward. Ms. Catlin?
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. First of all, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, loud and clear.
Thank you very much. Mayor Doll, city council members, city staff, and other meeting listeners, I want to thank you for the opportunity to join your call today. As Mr. Rosenberg mentioned, I have over 25 years of local government experience with Albemarle County and worked through many disaster situations that we thought were unprecedented. But here we are, in fact, actually in the unprecedented situation. And I first of all, want to commend your city and your city staff and all your residents and businesses for pulling together in the way they have so far. It's been very amazing to see. I really appreciate the trust and confidence that the city has shown in allowing me to work with you on this. What I wanted to talk to you about for the next few minutes was how we have been talking about moving to a more strategic and intentional way to approach communications, going from kind of the early days of a reactive emergency response, to what we would consider a more sustainable, predictable, really systematic way of doing communications, not in response to an incident, but as an ongoing new state of affairs in a period of time that none of us know how long will last. So some immediate action steps that we are talking about and putting into place. The website is obviously a really critical communication tool. We are right now making some changes to the front page of the website, so that the COVID portal page, which is kind of the page where we're going to assemble and feature all the information, is going to be visible and very accessible and easy for people to find. Also, Mr. Rosenberg mentioned the social media, really looking at building capacity and redundancy in that. Right now, we are working to identify and put training in place for staff that can serve as backup, making sure that they have the administrative access they need and can work offsite at all times. That has to be a 24/7 operation for sure. And using social media in a more robust way to highlight emerging issues, to headline new information, and really to drive traffic to your website, which is the central repository for information going forward. Some other kinds of things that are being done immediately is looking at the online calendars and all the kinds of ways that events are being publicized to make sure that appropriate up-to-date information is being put out there. The department level is the first place for things like that, for example, the library and Parks and Rec and things like that. So they've been doing a good job of keeping information accurate. Also, Morgan Smith, the Executive Assistant in the City Manager's Office, is kind of the overall quality control checker to keep an eye on a daily basis on the information that is out there on the website and in social media to make sure that we are keeping up to date as quickly as possible with this evolving situation. I think one thing that Mr. Rosenberg mentioned that we are going to be instituting tomorrow is a more planned information gathering and disseminating protocol. Up until this point, for a lot of good reasons, because things have been happening so quickly, the news releases have kind of been going out in a reactive ad hoc kind of member, or, excuse me, kind of process. What we'd like to do is, to the greatest extent possible, put together a daily update in the 3:30 to 4 o'clock range every day, so we can bundle information together, put it out in a predictable and consistent schedule. And in that way, we're not seeing things change from hour to hour and having to issue and reissue information that, say, may seem conflicting. So what we're thinking about would be content gathering during the day with a deadline of 3:30 or so, assembling a draft and getting it approved by 4:00, sending that out to city staff and council members by 4:15 to 4:30, and issuing it to the press and social media at that same time. Obviously, if there's emergency information that needs immediate attention by the public, we would not hold it for the end of the day, but we don't want to be doing press release after press release for things that really can wait until a bundled release can be put together. I think in the next several days, a really important focus is on recognizing that the website, it not only needs to be the central information repository, but it also is going to be the virtual front door for City of Stanton business for an unspecified period of time. So we need to make sure that we are working with the web staff to make that as accessible as possible. For example, is it user-friendly? Is it intuitive? Can people get to where they need to go to transact business with the City of Stanton as quickly and as easily as they possibly can, since we are asking them to do that as opposed to coming in in person? So I think those are the kinds of things that we're looking to do. I'm very interested and eager to be responsive to what council sees as their needs and what they're hearing from their constituents. So I am happy to answer questions and would be very anxious to hear what you think we're missing as I talk to you about this plan.
All right. Thank you. Let's start with Dr. Curran. Do you have comments or questions?
No, I don't.
All right. Mr. Holmes, do you have any questions or comments?
At this time, no.
Okay. Dr. Harrington, do you have any questions or comments?
Just to say, I'm very glad that you're with us. Keep moving forward. Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Mead, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Carr, do you have any questions or comments? Okay. Ms. Oaks, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I do not have any questions. The only comment, I appreciate the consistency of the time that information will be released, unless it's an immediate emergency situation.
All right. I would just like to add that I appreciate having you on board to help us with the communications, because I, well, we all know that money is the number one, but communication is right up there with that. So, for example, as I'm sitting here, I've just gotten an email from a grocery store that wants to be included on any communications sent out to local businesses. So in this instance, can I send that to you, or how should I proceed with these kinds of emails and questions that I'm getting?
I appreciate the question. We may have to field this out a little bit, but I think that at this point, we are working through Morgan Smith and Mr. Rosenberg's office to kind of be a central point of information. So if you can send to her what you're getting, she and I are going to be doing an arranged conference call every morning to check in and see what we've got and see what the needs of the day might be, so that way she can be our early warning system, if you will. Mr. Rosenberg, is that agreeable to you?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'll start forwarding these things to her. My other concern is that I feel like the city council, and I know that with the quick emergence of this particular emergency, and not having a communications manager, we've been kind of in a reactive mode. But I feel like the council hasn't had an opportunity to reach out to the citizens, even just to thank those who are, you know, trying to follow the social distancing and the ones who are volunteering to help others who have needs. So I don't know if that can somehow be included in these efforts, and your thoughts on that?
I think that's a really good idea. I appreciate you bringing it up. I think, as you mentioned, the first days and week of this situation has been about getting information out and being very focused on the practical aspects of continuity of operations and those kinds of things which rightfully had to happen. But people are concerned, they're anxious, they look to their elected officials for reassurance. And what I would be happy to do is put together, give some thought to and put together for your consideration over the next coming days and weeks of this, what ways we can give you options to do that.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So are there any other comments that anybody has on communications? If not, then we'll move on to actions that may be considered by council. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And let me express my thanks to Ms. Catlin also for joining on the call and for her willingness to help us with this situation. What I would like to do under the heading of action thing that may be considered by council is really share with you, you know, I think, sort of four general subjects about which staff has heard either from the public or from members of council, or both, as forms of relief that may be provided to businesses and residents in the city. And I would stress to you, as you think about all of these, that any relief, it would be our recommendation that any relief that is provided would be temporary in nature, and only for the duration of the emergency situation that we're presently dealing with. So with that background, there are five areas that have become known to us, again, either from the public or council members or both. The first is suspension of parking fees at all city facilities. And I can tell you that that subject was raised directly by Mr. Slawski with me earlier today, and he provided to me a count just for the, he only had counts for Friday, March 13th, and Friday, I'm sorry, Monday, March 16th. On those two dates, the Johnson Street Parking Garage was not staffed because of employee illness, so it was open at no cost to any user. The New Street Garage had 17 paid customers on Friday, 11 paid customers on Monday, and the Warf Parking Lot had 47 paid customers on Friday and 60 paid customers on Monday. So that is, the suspension of parking fees is a subject that I think some of you have raised, that we've heard about from the public, and that this morning, in fact, I heard from Mr. Slawski, his suggestion that he saw no reason to continue staffing those facilities or collecting the fees. But we've not yet taken action on that, choosing to wait for this meeting and to receive council's input. The second subject is suspension of water disconnections for non-payment of bills. This, again, is an area in which we've been active, though we have not yet implemented any measures to provide that relief. I would share with you our observations that the utility industry generally, I think both nationally and here in the Commonwealth of Virginia, has taken a step to refrain from disconnections. And in fact, those utilities that are subject to regulation by the State Corporation Commission have been ordered not to disconnect customers for a certain period of time. So that's the second area. Then we have the subject raised by Mr. Holmes earlier in the meeting, some sort of relief from the imposition of meals taxes. We've had inquiries or suggestions about the waiver of late fees that may be due to the city for any manner of payments that are paid by businesses or residents to the city. And then finally, the other subject we've heard about, I think just this morning, was the, or is the suspension of parking enforcement. So that is sort of the aggregation of subjects we've heard about, and I'm happy to hear from members of council about any other potential relief that has been suggested to them.
Okay. So let's just quickly go through the council members and see if you have any other suggestions for discussion that you've either thought of or someone has mentioned to you. So Mr. Holmes, do you have anything else?
Well, you know, I know a lot of restaurants are probably going to close, and there's a possibility that they'll have a lot of food that'll be going bad. And it might be possible to get these people to donate this to the food bank or to a mission or something, just so they just don't throw it away. You know, I'm not going to close my business, but I'm just trying to do, to go only, and we're already looking at anything that, you know, before it gets borderline, if we don't think we can sell it, you know, and we can't freeze it, we're probably going to donate it to the mission.
Okay. So that's an item for discussion. It would probably be a matter of communicating that as a possibility for businesses. Dr. Harrington?
I have a question about the notion of suspending parking fees. Was the reason for Mr. Slawski's opinion that there was no point in collecting them now is that the cost of collecting them is greater than what we're likely to collect? Was that the gist of it?
I think that was, but I was asking for, do you have any additional items to add to the list before we discuss?
No, I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question, Mayor. No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Ms. Mead?
Yeah, Mayor Doll, I heard, yes. Mr. Rosenberg, when you started the conversation about actions that we might take, I thought you said you had five items? And as I was looking through them, I only, I'm only thinking of four, or only seeing four. Could you just quickly repeat what those five items were?
Yes. Suspension of parking fees, suspension of water disconnections, relief from meals taxes, waiver of late fees due to the city, and suspension of parking enforcement.
Okay.
Which is different from suspension of parking fees. So parking enforcement would be enforcing the two-hour limitation on Beverly Street, which is, for which drivers receive tickets.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Vice Mayor Carr, do you have any item to add?
Well, mine is probably going to be outside of council control, but I do have a question. that pertains to staffing, so if we've got another category, I will wait for that.
Okay. Ms. Oaks?
No.
All right. Dr. Curran?
No.
Okay, so we've got our list, which are the five that Mr. Rosenberg had mentioned, and then also the item that Mr. Holmes added about the possibility of any restaurants that are going to close, of them donating their food to the food bank or the mission or something. All right, so, Mr. Rosenberg, are we just gonna, are we gonna open this up now to one at a time, maybe? I guess that, maybe that's the way to do it. So if I start with Dr. Harrington, your thoughts on suspending the parking fees?
Well, that, my question relate, would, the answer to my question would inform my answer to your question. That is, is Tom recommending that we stop collecting parking fees because it's not, the process of collecting them is more expensive than the proceeds of collecting? Is that the, is it just of it?
Dr. Harrington, I would infer that from the communication that I received from him, which was an email. I have not had an opportunity to speak with him directly about it, but my sense is that he sees limited usage of these facilities, especially as there's increased guidance for people to stay home. And so with the decreased usage, I think if he were here to speak to the issue, and I'm certainly happy to follow up with him and to ask him this question specifically, but if he were to speak to the issue, I think he would say precisely that, that the revenue that we stand to receive is de minimis and probably expected to decline to a greater extent.
Okay. Well, that being the case, then I would favor that step of temporarily suspending the collection of parking fees.
Okay. So, Ms. Mead, your thoughts on suspending parking fees?
Just a question about that, a question about the reducing the fees from parking. Would the part-time employees who are currently collecting those fees be laid off, or would they be under the public health emergency leave that you've announced, Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes, so first of all, let me say that we have, well, let me answer your question first, Ms. Mead. We have made an administrative determination that through April 15th, that all employees who are scheduled to work will be compensated as scheduled, even if they are not in the workplace. So, you know, we will try to find other tasks for these employees to perform within their departments, but if that doesn't work, they will be compensated as scheduled. And that's across the organization, so I think we're dealing with that issue to some extent, maybe with the library and with the Parks and Recreation Department, which has seen their operations suspended already.
And then subsequent to that?
We've not yet, we've not yet considered that issue. We're, you know, we want to wait and see how the situation unfolds. When we made that determination, it was the middle of March, and on the basis of our internal discussions, we felt comfortable making a decision administratively to say that for a period of one month, approximately one month, that we would make that provision.
This is Mayor Doll, but I don't know if we should have people give their thoughts on whether they would be in favor of approving those as well as asking questions, and also that the fact that this is, any suspension of anything that we would do would be time-limited, and it may be based on input from staff as to any kind of administrative ease of doing it a cert, you know, four weeks versus five weeks or whatever. That's my opinion, and maybe I'm asking that question, if that's how we would do that.
This is, this is Ms. Mead. So what you're looking for from me is would I approve the suspension of parking fees? If that's what you're looking for, then the answer would be yes.
Okay. Vice Mayor Carr, your thoughts on suspending parking fees?
Yes, under the conversation we've had, yes, I would.
All right. Ms. Oaks?
Yes, I support suspending parking fees.
Dr. Curran?
Yes, I support suspending the parking fees.
All right. Mr. Holmes?
Yes, I support it also.
Okay, and, Ms. Mayor Doll, I also would support suspending it with a timeframe attached to that suspension, at least to review it. So if there's an initial time, then we'll review it prior to that deadline. If staff and city council are favorable to that, that's how I would like to see it happen. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Madam Mayor, this is Mr. Rosenberg. My inclination at the present time, you know, we've, you know, we've been utilizing this April 15th date for multiple purposes, which actually takes us out beyond, I think, the flag that has been planted by many other localities, which are really using sort of an end-of-March or early-April date for purposes of temporary measures that are being implemented. So my inclination today is that with regard to all of these issues that we're talking about, unless it causes some sort of an accounting issue for Mr. Treer, that we'd be thinking in terms of an April 15th date and to be reevaluated as that date approaches.
Okay. That sounds good to me. So the next item is suspension of water disconnections, and I guess that would be through April 15th or thereabout. And I would, I would say I'm definitely in favor of this, because if we're asking people to wash their hands, we don't want to turn the water off on them. So, Vice Mayor Carr, your thoughts?
I would agree, yes.
All right. Ms. Oaks?
Yes, definitely.
Dr. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Dr. Harrington?
Yes, for the reasons you stated and for other good reasons, yes.
All right. And Ms. Mead?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Okay. This is called the virtual head nod. All right, the next item is late fees suspension. And let's start with Ms. Mead. Your thoughts or questions on late fees suspension?
And this is specifically late fees related to payment of meals tax, or is this waiver of late fees with respect to any city fee?
As I, so, Ms. Mead has the, as I have been made aware of the concept, it would be a broad, it would be a broad waiver that would apply or could apply to all amounts or payments that are due to the city, but I believe, and maybe Mr. Johnson can address, there may be some limitations on the ability of the city to waive late fees for tax payments.
Yeah. Mr. Johnson, your thoughts?
Yeah, we would have to look at state codes on that, because that's mandated by City 8.1, State Revenue Code. There hasn't been any guidance given to us on that, and then you would also have to make the determination based upon a due date that would be occurring, such as the next big tax due date, which is the 20th, and would you make that determination at that time?
So let me ask Mr. Treer if he can come sort of give council a menu of other sorts of payments that come to the city, where we might have, I'm putting him on the spot. I can tell council members, Mr., Vice Mayor Carr is here, I can see the facial expression, but Mr. Treer did not know he was going to be asked this question. And so it may be, before I turn it over to him, that this is an issue on which we need to do further research and report back to you at the next meeting. But with that, let me see whether Mr. Treer has had an opportunity to come up with an answer. We certainly can look at various options for council. I'm not prepared to address that issue at this time. I would certainly feel that for businesses that are collecting taxes on behalf of the citizens, that perhaps those do get remitted. Mr. Gwain can probably talk about the legal ramifications of that better than I, for sure he can. With water and sewer payments, we, you know, we do have separate enterprise funds, those are not part of the general fund, but they do have their limitations. Parking is probably the fund that is the tightest of all, so waiver of fees should be limited and looked at closely, I would say. So do we, Mr. Treer, impose a late fee on our water customers? Yes. So, Mayor and members of council, I suppose that we can approach this in one of two ways. We can either come back to you at the next meeting with a more in-depth analysis of this subject of the waiver of late fees, both on the tax and the non-tax side, or we could all, we could, as an alternative, sort of carve out the late fees on the water side and say that you've already decided that you wish to suspend disconnections with regard to water fees, and at the same time could make a decision not to impose late charges on water fees that, when is our next due date? Do you know that? I believe the next batch is due to the 11th and 10th of April, is that correct?
I think so. That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I guess the due date is March.
I don't handle water, but...
And after what period of time is there a late fee imposed? Thirty days, I believe. Okay, so maybe it's premature to even act on that issue, council, since what we're trying to do here is keep our eye on that April 15th date. It seems that we wouldn't have any late fees that would actually be imposed during that time period, and so my suggestion to you is that you allow us to do a deeper dive into this subject generally and report back to you at the next council meeting.
All right, so council members, does that sound like a good plan to get more information from staff so that we're making the best decision based on information? And I'll go down the list. Vice Mayor Carr?
I agree.
Ms. Oaks?
I agree.
Dr. Curran?
I agree.
Mr. Holmes?
In case we decide to do this, would we be ready to vote on it on the next, the next meeting?
If we felt the information was warranted.
I think so. I think if we can isolate which ones, like if we're, if there's a legal problem with eliminating late fees on tax collections, you know, then we wouldn't be doing that. But otherwise, anything that we could do, we would be prepared to vote with additional information, I would think, at the next meeting.
Okay, yes, I'm for it.
Dr. Harrington?
Yes, I'm for it.
Ms. Mead?
Yes.
All right. So then we're gonna, Mr. Rosenberg, we'll have, we'll wait for more information on what late fees qualify and any kind of timeframe for that.
Mayor Doll, this is Councilwoman Mead. Could I also ask that the, that there be some estimate of what the financial implications would be? I can't imagine that late fees comprise a significant number for us, but I still would like to know, and so I'd appreciate that with the additional information.
Will we please?
That would be fine, I would think. Mr. Treer, you could provide that by the next meeting, right?
Yes, we'll be able to provide that. I would note that when you start, if we include the late fees on tax payments, the figure does, I think, start to become somewhat large. If we're just talking about other revenues, then not so much.
Right.
All right, thanks. All right, the next one is meals tax. And we'll start with Ms. Mead. Your thoughts on meals tax? And it's not really clear to me yet whether we can, what we can, what we're legally able to do with meals tax.
For instance, I...
Go ahead, Ms. Mead.
So, so I, the city of Richmond, apparently the restaurateurs in the city of Richmond got together and went to the city and proposed a waiver of late fees on meal taxes, meals taxes, that it is, it would be a de facto permission, if you will, for restaurants, simply not to pay them for, you know, for thirty to sixty days, and then to make it up at some later period in time, period of time, and not have to pay a late fee. At least that's what the, that's what the interpretation was that I saw of that.
All right.
So I think that's the implication of waiving late fees. And I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I would just like to understand what the financial impact might be in terms of the timing of the waiver and what percentage of that meals tax we would likely be foregoing for some period of time.
All right. And I'm uncertain with the meals tax. I would like to hear definitively what our ability is in terms of the legal aspects as to what we can do regarding the meals tax. I'm not comfortable saying, yeah, let's not collect it in case we're supposed to be doing that, and we're doing something illegal. So Vice Mayor Carr, your thoughts?
Well, I'm sitting here thinking of the implications to the state. I mean, I think maybe we could waive our part of the meals tax, but then what do they do to the state? Is the state going to waive their part of it? So I agree with Brenda that there's a lot more here to look at with those than just saying yes or no.
All right. Ms. Oaks?
Whatever relief we can legally offer as far as the meals tax, I'm in full support of it.
Well, we don't know if there's, we don't know what we can offer, so I think we really need to have more information on that.
Yeah, what we can do and what we cannot do. If we can offer the relief, then I'm in support of it. It's just, I guess, a legal question. Um, it's just, I guess, a legal question, so...
Dr. Curran?
Yeah, so I'm in favor of us finding out what we're legally allowed to do.
Yeah. Mr. Holmes?
Ma- Mayor Doll, uh, and, and I'm not for forgiving the tax. I'm for letting them pay the tax down the road without any, uh, penalties for late being late, you know, because I know how much the city depends on this. And, and, you know, I've already paid my meal tax for the, for the last month. But what I'm saying is, you know, there's a lot of smaller places that, you know, that right now $4,000, you know, could really hurt them. So, anything legally we could do, I, I, I'm for it. And, and, you know, uh, I know, I know we need that money because there, there's not gonna be much meal tax this month, you know?
All right. Dr. Harrington?
Yeah, it's not clear to me exactly what the, uh, what the benefit is, would be of us, uh, waiving the tax or waiving the interest on a late payment of the tax, uh, at this point. And I, and I think it'll be clearer, um, if we can, if we just take a little time to analyze it some more and figure out, would that really be a help? Uh, what, what's the downside of doing it in terms of our own city revenues? I'm not prepared now to head nod in favor of doing it and think we should get more information.
And, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, this is Mr. Rosenberg. Um, if I can just share with council that our subject matter expert on, on, on this subject is Maggie Reagan, the Commissioner of the Revenue, who's responsible for the administration of this tax. And unfortunately, she was unable to be with us today.
Steve, any of that?
I'm sorry?
Steve, I didn't hear any of that. It was breaking up.
Okay, let, let me start over. I was saying that, um, we, we're, we do not have with us today Maggie Reagan, the Commissioner of the Revenue, who is responsible for the administration of this tax. And so I, I believe she would be available at council's next meeting to, to delve into the subject and to provide some greater guidance to council about what, what the options may be and what the repercussions of certain actions may be.
I, I think that would be helpful.
That would be, that would be helpful.
Because I, I'm worried about, um, what actual help the, you know, waiving the meal tax would be because it's not the, the, the store, the restaurant owners aren't paying the tax. They're just collecting it from other people. And then I do have concerns about, how much money are we talking? What can we do legally? I don't want to do something that's, that's not legal and then, then we have to, you know, pay the consequences of, of doing something incorrectly. So it sounds like the majority, if not all, are in favor of getting, uh, that additional information, Mr. Rosenberg, uh...
Uh, Mayor Doll?
Ms- Mr. Holmes?
Yes, um, well, a couple of things is, meal, meal tax is due on the 20th. So, uh, you know, if, if, if we don't... I know if we have to wait until Maggie gets back. But, but also, basically what it would work out, it would be like a de facto small business loan, which they would, you know, pay back, uh, over the coming months. If, if, and I know that if it's, if we can't legally do it, we can't do it. But that, that would be the main reason that I would see for doing it. If that makes sense to you guys.
Right, and part of my concern though, that part of that is, uh, it's not just local, um, tax.
Right, right, I understand.
And then would they, would everybody have to, like, split that money up and, and send in some of it? And who's gonna keep track of all that? I, I, you know, we just, I think we just don't have enough information on how to accomplish that and what we can do legally.
Okay, okay, um, but...
I think what I'm hearing is that we do need more information to make a decision. Mr. Rosenberg, uh, so, uh, would, would that be available by our next meeting?
That, that would be our intention, uh, Mayor Doll, would be to provide you with additional information on that subject at the next meeting.
Okay. And then the last item is, uh, uh, is the parking enforcement. So Vice Mayor Kyer, your thoughts?
Now, Madam Mayor, before you, um, address that subject, I'm gonna ask Chief Williams if he has any thoughts to share with you about, um, about suspending that enforcement and the, uh, possible ramifications of that.
All right.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thanks for, uh, for having me here. Uh, so, we can do it. Um, you know, we, we basically have one person doing parking enforcement part-time right now. Uh, our patrol officers also do it and it has needed basis, largely complaint-based. Uh, we can certainly suspend the parking enforcement and then it just becomes, you know, the first people to get down there are gonna be able to park all day. Um, I think some business folks say, you know, it would be helpful. Uh, but then I think a lot of them, you know, if they're not the first one to get those spots and, and, and take it for hours, then they're not happy, so... Um, but we, we can certainly do it. You know, we, we do it for a few days, snowstorms and, and things like that. Um, I'm not sure that it would, uh, it would help in, in this instance. It may, they may think it's gonna help. Um, my, my kind of gut feeling after doing this for a number of years is that, uh, we'll end up with a lot more complaints and they'll, they'll wanna go back if we, if we do suspend it.
All right, thank you, Chief Williams. Um, I...
Mayor Doll?
I will say that I've heard people, um, well, I know that we've expanded the loading zones and we worked on that because people are doing takeout food or pick-up, um, uh, items that they've ordered online or over the phone and they're just doing pickup. So, uh, that made a lot of sense to me to have, um, a lot more short-term, you know, loading zones. Um, but I have concerns about the parking enforcement be... For the very reasons that you say, if we're trying to have parking available, you know, for our senior center, citizens and, and other citizens to go and pick up items that support the, the local business, if, if the parking spaces are all filled up by folks who may work or own stores downtown, then we're defeating the purpose. And that's my thoughts on it, so we'll go, we'll start with, uh, Dr. Curran. Well, your thoughts on parking enforcement?
Madam Mayor, this is Mr. Rosenberg. If I could just interject one more thought, one more thought before you look for your head nods. Uh, council members may wish to keep in mind that we're going to move forward with free parking at the wharf and the two garages where people will be able to park at no cost on an unlimited basis. So that may figure into your thoughts about how to deal with this parking enforcement issue.
All right, Dr. Curran? Have I, have I lost Dr. Curran?
Sorry, uh, I was on mute.
Oh.
Is, um, I just wanna clarify what the question is. Are we talking about suspending parking?
Parking enforcement.
Yeah, is it suspending it downtown or suspending it throughout the city?
The issue, Dr. Curran, is whether the parking enforcement officers should continue to enforce, for example, the two-hour parking restrictions on Beverly Street. That's the best example of, of, uh, parking enforcement that I can share with you.
Okay. Um, I don't know, I could see it both ways. Um, I suppose if, if local merchants think this will help them, uh, then, then why not? But, of course, if it creates problems, then we'll have to revisit the issue.
All right, now, Mr. Holmes?
Um, I think, I think we should keep it as is since the, all, all the other parking's gonna be available because, you know, people, places like Pampered Pallet or any of the little shops there are already gonna have cars hopefully lined up to pick up stuff. And, uh, so we don't wanna, you know, uh, they, it's not that far to walk from one of the major parking lots to, to downtown and, and there's a lot of spaces there that could take care of that.
All right, thanks. Dr. Harrington?
I'm not in favor of suspending the limits on parking downtown. I don't think there's any... I'm not persuaded that there's any benefit to it. And, uh, I think we should keep them as they are.
All right, thanks. Ms. Ms. Mead?
I think we should continue to, um, uh, uh, have parking enforcement on, specifically on Beverly Street. And when somebody is saying downtown, I, I'm assuming that's what they're talking about, just Beverly Street? Because if we're, uh, giving free parking on all the, all the rest of the lots downtown, then the only, the only street left with non-paid parking would be Beverly Street. Is that correct?
We have considerably, considerably additional parking available on streets, um, elsewhere downtown, on-street parking that is, uh, subject to enforcement by the parking enforcement officers.
So on Central Avenue and Frederick Street, we're talking about that as well?
Yes, New Street, um...
New, New Street, Church.
Fire Street.
Okay, all right. I, I'd like to continue to, um, enforce parking, uh, in those areas.
Okay, Vice Mayor Kyer?
So I was gonna say at this time that I'd be... But Chief Williams was saying, we are offering free parking in all Beverly facilities. I have no reason to suspend, uh, enforcement downtown.
All right, thanks. Ms. Oaks?
Well, restaurants are asked to, um, provide, like, the curbside service, so they need those spots available. And we're also trying to focus on our seniors. We are offering free parking, so under those circumstances, and also the fact that we wanna keep our parking enforcement officer working, I would say let's continue with, um, monitoring parking and any time limits, um, the violators should be ticketed.
All right, um, did, did I get everybody on that one? I think I did. Um, so if, if so, to recap, I think we have head nods, virtual head nods on suspending the parking fees, suspending water disconnections, and a no on parking, uh, eliminating parking enforcement. And then we need more information on the late fees suspension and the meal tax. And then we have the final i- item that Terry added on the donating food. Um, and I, and I think that's probably, um, I don't know if that would be helpful to go through SDDA, uh, to send out a, just a, uh, you know, information or, um... 'Cause that's, that's kind of a communication issue. So I, I, I don't have any thoughts on who should do, best do that, whether the city staff or SDDA. But I, it's a good idea. I think, I think that's hel- that would be helpful for folks who are, are gonna close. Um, so do you may have any other thoughts on that item?
Madam Mayor, this is Mr. Rosenberg.
Yes.
I'd be pleased to reach out to Greg Bean to talk with him about how we, how, uh, that effort can best be coordinated.
All right, that sounds good.
Mayor Doll?
Mr. Holmes?
No, it was open.
Uh... Mayor Doll, did you call me?
I, I was just, just gonna say, uh, do you concur with that if Mr. Rosenberg talks to Greg Bean, uh, in terms of getting that information out?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I believe Mr. I believe Vice Mayor Kyer has a, a comment to make.
Vice Mayor Kyer?
Yes, just one other thing that I've been holding because it didn't seem to fit in the others. And, uh, Mr. Rosenberg has addressed it. I was pretty emphatic in seeing us support our city staff that may not be working and paying them because if they don't receive some kind of compensation, then there's no money to take to the grocery store than anywhere else, which will kill the economy even more. So I wanna thank the city staff and Mr. Rosenberg for addressing that issue before I could get it out.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Kyer. We're, we're now at the other matters from the city manager or city council.
Um, Madam, Madam Mayor, if I can just summarize for a moment, I wanna be sure. I think that Mr. Gwynn is working on ordinances for the items that, on which council has already indicated its intention to move forward. But, um, if it's council's pleasure, we can communicate to the public today, um, the suspension, today or tomorrow, the suspension of parking fees and the suspension of water disconnections is actions that will be forthcoming by city council at its next meeting.
Yes, that's correct. And in fact, I don't know if they can be written, but, you know, that could be effective, you know, today, I think, but we haven't voted on it yet. But if it could, if it could be retro, um, you know, that'd be great. At least for the disconnect, disconnections.
Are, are there any, are there any objections from any council members if, if we move forward with denouncing those, um, those measures?
No.
No objection.
No objection.
No objection.
Moving on then... Moving on then, Madam Mayor, to discuss other matters. Um, I had one, but I think I have two now. There was a, we received a question before the meeting about, uh, from one mem- member of council about, um, potential impact to the, the May election. And I asked Molly Goldsmith, the city registrar, to attend the meeting and she's been patiently sitting, uh, for the last couple of hours. So I'd like to go ahead and ask her to come and share with council, uh, information that she has from, uh, the State Department of Elections that's, that's relevant to the inquiry that we received.
Welcome, Ms. Goldsmith. Glad that you could sit through all that.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. What was the inquiry?
About the May elections, that you had some, um, information. I think I know what it is, uh, but it's, it's what decision has been made, uh, by the state board of elections on how we can, uh, handle the May elections.
Oh, um, as of now, they are encouraging all voters to vote absentee by mail and this requires them all to fill an application. They can request applications from my office either by phone, email, or they can apply online.
So the specific question was, are we making contingency plans to delay the upcoming May elections?
Um, from my reading of, I think the governor has to do that. They have, they have the pow- the governor has the power to delay it by two weeks and then if, um, the administration, local administration wants to delay it further, they can. That's in the case of an emergency, like it looks like right now. Um, so...
So do you think that the absentee ballot, uh, allowance is, uh, to, is an indication that we'll just do the elections that way?
Currently, that is what elect is telling us and that we start absentee in-person voting Friday and their guidance is to encourage all voters to vote by mail and continue with all essential, um, functions of our office, registration, in-person absentee vote and voting and that stuff.
And so I can tell, uh, council members that Ms. Goldsmith has communicated to us that in-person absentee voting requires the establishment of a polling place, which is in City Hall typically. So in terms of contingency planning, arrangements have been made in the event that we close the building to the pub- in the event that we close the building to the public to locate the polling place in the Johnson, in the Johnson Street parking garage. So voters would vote in-person absentee in that location.
It would be like outside poll voting. They'd have to actually call the office and then we'd come out, check them in, and check their ID, give them a ballot, and then take the ballot back inside.
Okay. Any other questions, uh, about this? And, and this is subject to change, I guess, if, if the governor made an announcement. It could, it could change. But in the absence of that, uh, we would be encouraging citizens to go ahead and, uh, and, uh, get, request a ballot and vote absentee.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, the other item that I have, um, before we see what council members may have, is to talk to you briefly about next week's scheduled meeting, uh, which is, uh, the twenty-sixth, March twenty-sixth. We have on the agenda for that meeting, the budget presentation, as well as two notice public hearings for proposed rate increases. I want, want to let council members know that we are currently planning for that to be an in-person meeting using social distancing protocols. Uh, other localities within the state and elsewhere in the, in the country have, um, employed these tools in order to conduct meetings. So we would, for example, uh, limit the use of seats in the audience. Um, we would make arrangements for council members to be seated at sufficiently distant locations in council chambers, and not necessarily with all of you at the dais. Um, but it, it is our thinking that given, um, the, the nu- and, and we will manage, uh, public hearing comments, um, perhaps in a manner similar to, uh, how we handled things, um, for the matters from the public when the Second Amendment was a prevalent topic. Um, so we're just beginning now, um, planning out for, for the meeting. But it, it's our view that, given, uh, the fact that it involves the budget presentation and the two public hearings that have been noticed, that it, that it would be best to conduct an in-person meeting rather than to conduct a, um, telephonic meeting as we are here. And I think that there are some questions about, um, whether we can conduct a meeting in this current manner, um, on those subjects.
All right, does, do, do council members have any questions about that information?
I do, uh, Mayor Doe, Jim Harrington.
Yes.
Are, are we subject to the ti- the ten participant limitation if we do that?
Not necessarily.
What?
I, I, I'm, I'm looking to Mr. Gwynn and, um, I, I think it's uncertain whether that would apply in, in this instance. The, the, um, you know, the limi- the limitation is very clear in terms of, um, restaurants and fitness centers and theaters. Um, and I think that it, I think it is encouraged in other environments, um, but not necessarily mandated. And so our suggestion would be that we employ social distancing protocols to ensure that everybody who attends the meeting is, um, at the prescribed distance from one another during the meeting. And that, and that we protect council members, staff, and participants, public participants in that manner.
Any other questions?
Uh, Mayor Doe, this is Terry Holmes.
Yes.
If we were, if we were to have a meeting, uh, uh, would it be fair to, to, to put the, uh, rate increases out there when there's a possibility that nobody would show up because they were afraid of getting sick? Or getting sick?
Uh, I, Mr. Holmes, I don't know, I don't know who's gonna answer that one.
Yeah.
I, I think the, the problem is-
I just, I just didn't know if we would shouldn't.
With the budget and, and I don't know that if we delayed it to the next meeting, if it would be any better, or the next meeting, if it would be any better. Um, and I'm, I'm assuming that's why staff would like to, uh, go ahead and, and we've already advertised the public hearings, the two of them. Um, I, I don't know. Mr. Rosenberg, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, yes, I do, um, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is an unprecedented situation. And, you know, we have, we have deadlines that are established by the state. We have a budget, um, that we're ready to propose. It relies on rate increases to balance. Um, and we know that it's gonna be a challenge even as we propose it, uh, given the extreme change in circumstances. And so I think we have no choice but to move forward. Um, and I appreciate Mr. Holmes' concerns about the ability of the public to participate. Um, but I don't know that we really have any choice, um, you know, as you have suggested, Mayor Doe. If we were to, to delay until the first meeting in April, I imagine we would find ourselves in precisely the same situation.
Ms. Rosenberg, this is, um, Brenda Mead. Uh, not to get too far into the weeds of what, what your job is versus what my job is, but is it possible that we could place enough seating in the hallway that we might accommodate, uh, the eventuality that many people would like to speak on the subject of rates at that council meeting?
We, we certainly can. And we can, um, we can turn on the sound in the hallway, which has been upgraded, um, on the basis of our experiences with, with the Second Amendment issue. So we're in a position to provide much better audio in the hallway than we had earlier this year.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that's all I have. If you, perhaps you wish to ask council members whether they have? Yes, we have one, the next item on the agenda is mine. But in terms of other matters from the city manager or city council, that's all I have. You may perhaps wish to see if council members have any other issues they would like to discuss.
Mayor Doe.
Mayor Doe.
I think we've lost Mayor Doe.
Yeah, let me try the, um, secondary means of dialing her.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm back. I had the mute on.
Okay.
So, Ms. Mead, go ahead.
Uh, I did have a question of Chief Williams in, in the, uh, uh, in, in, due to, due to the fact that the governor has placed the ten patron limit in bars and restaurants and made, as I understand it, at least local police responsible for the enforcement of that. Uh, is that also going to include private clubs like the Elks Club? And, uh, and i- is that going to impact your staffing, um, Chief Williams?
Uh, thank you, Councilman Mead. We're, we're looking at this, and, and so many things we're dealing with right now are, are unprecedented. Uh, we're seeking some legal guidance from our, uh, our counsel attorney. There are a couple of code sections that, uh, that the governor provided, one of which makes it a class-one misdemeanor, which is probably gonna apply, uh, to the theaters and, uh, fitness centers. But it'll be a class-three misdemeanor, which is a fine only to restaurants. We're also trying to get a clarification as to what actually a restaurant is as defined in Dakota, Virginia. Um, so the, the, the real long answer to your question is we don't know.
Okay.
Certainly, um, you know, w- we're, we're looking at trying to, to handle emergencies, um, first and foremost in, in dealing with crimes in progress. You know, people that are driving, you know, twenty-six miles an hour, twenty-five mile an hour zone are, are not that important. And, and certainly, you know, if you have eleven patrons in a restaurant rather than ten, um, it would be something that would be within our discretion as well. So, but we're actively working on that. I've actually got, uh, I was checking my email frequently the past couple hours here. And I've gotten some preliminary information from counsel attorney. And so we'll move forward there and then make the best, uh, best decisions we can make.
Thank you. And another question, uh, not of Chief Williams, but of Mr. Rosenberg. Um, and I'm just gonna, I, I should assume that we are doing a lot of coordinating with the city of Waynesboro and Augusta County as, uh, as we work through some of the issues um, that we might share, uh, as municipalities or localities, rather?
That's correct, Ms. Mead. I'm in regular contact with Mr. Fitzgerald with Augusta County and Mr. Hamp with the city of Waynesboro, but by telephone and email. And we are keeping one another informed and coordinating our efforts. Um, we, we coordinated, for example, our declarations of local emergency. Um, we coordinated, to a great extent, our decisions about the library closure. Um, and we've been keeping one another informed about how we're approaching many of these other issues that we've discussed today.
Okay, thank you. And, and one, one issue that was not on my list that I submitted earlier, but that has been in the back of my mind. Um, I, I appreciated the information you forwarded, uh, from the Middle River Jail, um, Correctional Institute. I beg your pardon. Uh, you know, as I think about that, uh, that, there's a tremendous number of people who come in and out of, uh, Middle River on a daily basis. And, um, and many of those people, um, have not been adjudicated as being, you know, guilty of any crime. Uh, they are still in the process of, of, you know, in, in that justice process. I, I recognize that, uh, that it presents a huge challenge for the jail. Um, uh, many people may present that are asymptomatic for coronavirus. They may, they, they may not have a fever, but they may yet be carriers of it. I'm concerned that the jail may be the first place that we might have an overwhelming issue. And, and so would appreciate more information from, uh, from the, from, uh, the Correctional Institute about how they might gear up to, um, have the number of beds that they might, might ultimately need, um, if, uh, if the virus takes hold there.
We can certainly reach out, we can certainly reach out to the jail superintendent to see what additional information we can get.
Thank you.
So was there someone else, Mr. Holmes maybe, that, or did someone else have something they wanted to bring up?
Uh, I do, Ma- Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, is there anything that we can do about people hoarding supplies? You know, I mean, uh, I'm, I'm, you know, I've, I've been to all the stores yesterday and it wa- I just don't know what everybody's doing with all this toilet paper. Um, I might have to start selling, I might have to start selling meals for rolls of toilet paper. Uh, but, uh, it's really, it's really, uh, it's unnerving to not be able to get, uh, you know, Lysol or, or bleach or alcohol or peroxide or toilet paper or bread or, you know, just basic necessities. I don't know if there's anything that we can do, you know, to keep people from doing this, but, you know, 'cause I know, uh, from talking to some of those businesses, they're getting limited amounts of stuff on their trucks. And if, and if people keep hoarding these items, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's just, it's, it's gonna be hard on the people who have a hard time getting there. And I just saw that, uh, like Amazon is, is cutting back on the things that they're delivering, basically the necessities, which I hope toilet paper is a necessity. But, uh, I just didn't know if there was anything that we could do about that. And one other thing I had is, uh, a friend of mine said she saw some kids playing at, at, you know, on the playgrounds and stuff like that. Is, are those off limits for kids or, uh, as far as, you know, uh, being in an area where you could pick up, um, the virus?
Let me, um, uh, let, let me answer that question first, uh, Mr. Holmes. The parks are open for use by individuals. And, um, there is, there, the, the playground equipment is not cleaned by Parks and Recreation Department staff. Um, I, I imagine Dr. Carnegie is no longer on the line. Um, so we, you know, we've not closed the parks and the playground equipment in the parks is available for use.
So, uh, couns- council members, do you have any other items?
Mayor Doe, here, one more from me. This is Vice Mayor Carr.
All right.
I just wanted, um, to commend the folks that came up with the mutual aid infrastructure. Um, I, I think if we look at citizens stepping forward, helping others, this, and I think that's a tremendously great effort. And I think we'll be, with our communications director, maybe tapping into that or where people can add our information to that on a daily or weekly basis. Um, you know, I'm hearing the stuff about children not playing on the playground and stuff. The worst thing that could ever happen to us is that we became some kind of police state. Um, I want everybody to live through this. But somehow, we've gotta keep it rational, practical choice, Andrew, but we're doing it. And that's all. I don't know.
All right, anyone else?
Uh, this is Councilwoman Andrea Oaks.
All right.
I would simply like to state that, um, I too appreciate the, uh, community foundation uh, working with other outside agencies to help, uh, with basic, uh, human needs. Also, uh, to reiterate what Phil Traer had stated earlier that the FY 2020 budget, uh, will sustain the ability of, for the city to continue to function and that we will review at our next meeting, um, other ways to provide relief to the citizens. That is appreciated. And I did just wanna, um, mention to Councilwoman Mead, I did look into this when I saw your question on email. Um, the Elks did shut down today for two weeks, so they're completely shut down. Um, but thank you, everybody, and you guys have never looked better in the meeting. That's a joke.
Anyone else?
Not for me. Take care, everybody.
I would like to add my thanks to, to city staff, uh, for all the work that they've been doing.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
And our citizens.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Do you have one more item that's on the, on the agenda?
Right, the resolution?
Yes.
All right, so let's move to that one.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. It sounded as if, um, a couple, uh, one or two council members may have been preparing to leave the call. So I just wanted to make sure that we, we caught them before that occurred.
All right.
So if, if I may, um, as, as we've covered already on Monday, um, in my capacity as Director of Emergency Management, I made a declaration of local emergency. And, um, I'm gonna ask Mr. Doug, Mr. Gwynn to explain to you, um, what is required next, uh, subsequent to that declaration in the form of action by city council. Mr. Gwynn?
Madam Mayor, members of council, you probably saw in your inbox, if I'm fortunate, about- if I'm fortunate, at about 12:45, as we scrambled, a draft resolution for councils to consider adopting yet today. The resolution reflects the Virginia legal requirement that the governing body actually confirm the existence of an emergency as already declared by Mr. Rosenberg. So what you have before you is a draft resolution by which, as you've done before in several cases, to actually confirm the existence of an emergency, and it also declares a disaster. I'll be glad to read the resolution, although it is fairly lengthy, if you'd like. But it is very similar to what you've done before, and in effect, it's a ratification of what the manager has done, with just a little twist of adding also the declaration of disaster. And that little twist is done so that we put ourselves in the best position if and when we have the ability to use these declarations to either do something, not do something, or to receive funding that may come through. My recommendation is that council consider adopting this resolution if the mayor entertain a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Gwynn. So council members, I would entertain a motion to adopt this resolution as presented.
Sure move.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? With no further discussion, Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Dole.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kier.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. O.
Aye.
Ms. Currie.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, is there any, any other business? With no further business, uh, the meeting is adjourned.